It is now seven o'clock. I will call our February 8th regular Town Council meeting to order. Joseph, who will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will begin with our presentations and recognitions. The first of the night is for the Farmington High School Soccer Team's state championship. Joseph, will you begin?
Here, sir. Here they come, I think.
Okay, coming in now.
You fell out here, sir. Hold on a second. Coach, you have everybody here?
Coming in right now. We've got one injury, so he's walking.
Come on up to the podium.
Come on up front.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us and congratulations.
Thank you very much for having us. We appreciate it truly.
Come right up over here, guys.
Awesome.
How are you guys? How are you going, huh?
Actually, you know, why don't you guys come up this way and we'll get you on the camera. Stay on this side of the podium.
You guys want to go that way?
Well, never mind. They switched the camera. No, stay over there.
Getting too high tech here now.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us today. We have a lot of proclamations and everything. I get the honor of congratulating our Farmington High School Soccer Team. They had an impressive 17-3-1 record this year, battling COVID and all the other stuff that we've been fighting in school. They maintained their high excellence of maintaining a winning season. They started off in the Class L, right, division, and petitioned to move up to Double L because they wanted to go against the best teams in the state, and they did. They are currently ranked, what, number one after your championship, ranked fifth in New England? We have four all-conference players, two all-state players, and one all-New England player. So, gentlemen, thank you very much. Congratulations. You guys did an excellent job fighting, you know, from your ranks of where you were originally to achieving this great achievement today. So, congratulations, and I'm honored to give you our award of Certificate of Excellence. Coach, come on up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Wow.
Here you go. Come right up to the mic, sir.
I can't thank you enough for having us here tonight. The community support truly means so much to us. As a program, every day we talk about representing the town of Farmington with high character, giving our best effort, and no matter what the outcome, we're going to persevere and leave everything on the field, again, for Farmington. And for Farmington Soccer, it's more than just on the field. It's off the field as well, too. These players here and the ones that couldn't make it tonight are exceptional student athletes. Twenty-two of our players were named to the CCC All Academic Team as well, too. In addition to that, they're active in the community, and they truly care about Farmington and making it the best place possible. So, they are what we want from all of our student athletes here, and I just couldn't be more proud of them. Again, the state championship is excellent, but I couldn't be more proud of the people that they've become. So, thank you so much for the support. I couldn't ask for more. And with that being said, hopefully, we can come back next year and have this as well, too. And I do know our captain of the team, Ben Cosentino, has a couple of words that he would like to say, too.
Were we waiting on you, Ben, with the injury?
What?
Were we waiting for you?
Yeah. Getting over here. No, I think, just adding on to what Coach said, I think the best thing about this group of guys is they're just role models, you know, on the field, but not only on the field, but also, you know, in the classroom, in the community. And I think Coach did a really good job of haring that home. And, you know, there's everyone in the team bought into, you know, the ultimate goal of winning a state title this year, and I think that's what made us so successful. You know, there's no, you know, kids going after individual needs or individual wants. Everyone wanted to do what was best. You know, we said, you know, the saying "we" over "me" all year was, pretty much every single meeting we had was wrapped up with that. So, I think that was, you know, Coach did a really good job of haring that home, and everyone sort of followed that. And, you know, we just, like Coach said, you know, it was a challenging year, but we wanted to play in the best division in Class Double L. And, you know, we faced a lot of, you know, we had a lot of hard times, some tough times, a lot of adversity, but, you know, I think we fought through it, and that's what made the season so special. You know, we were, when the state tournament came, we were ready for whatever, whether we went down, whether someone got hurt, you know, whatever it may be. I think everyone was ready to step up, no matter who it was, whether the number was called or not, and I think everyone did a great job and played a significant role, whether on the field, off the field, you know, whenever. So, that's why I'm so proud of this, and I think it's so special.
Great. Well, congratulations. Don't go anywhere. We have our state representative, Mike D'Amico, who has something for you as well.
One more, Mike, before you jump in?
So, I will be brief. I will just allude to something that the coach mentioned earlier. This is just a small contingent of the Soccer Team. When they were there at the Board of Education meeting two weeks ago, it was an impressive sight, a huge team. And, again, to reiterate what was said earlier, not only are their on-the-field efforts impressive, but it's what they do off the field that's even more impressive, and that's what we strive for in Farmington. So, congratulations. So, without further ado, I will read the citation from the State of Connecticut, General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Exum, Senator Slapp, and Senator Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to the Farmington High School Boy Soccer Team in recognition of winning the CIAC Class Double L State Championship for 2021. This remarkable accomplishment is a testament to the dedication, resilience, and teamwork of the players, coaches, and parents of the Riverhawks. Your sportsmanship and work ethic are an inspiration to all. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success given on this sixth day of December, so we're a little late, sixth day of December 2021 at the State Capitol in Hartford, and it's signed by the President of the State Senate, Martin Looney, Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of the State. Congratulations one and all. Nice job.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. That concludes this portion. You know, you guys are great. You brought out all the important things, teamwork, being role models, not just on the field but off the field, which is what we strive for in all our sports. Some end up the season as fortunate as you are as the state champs, some don't, but carrying that with you throughout anyway, being the role models no matter what you're doing. So, thank you all, and good luck.
Thank you all. We really appreciate it.
Next, we have our first of three Eagle Scout awards this evening, and we're going to start with Dylan James Picard. Johnny.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, I'm here to present the proclamation. Whereas the Scouts BSA helped train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Dylan J. Picard from Troop 170 Scouts BSA recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout, and whereas Dylan J. Picard identified a need for year-round community activity at his former elementary school, and whereas Dylan J. Picard uses Eagle Scout project to build a Gaga ball pit at Union Elementary School for the students to enjoy during recess and for the after-school Excel program to enjoy all year long, and whereas Dylan J. Picard's project involved constructing a freestanding octagon that allows participants to play Gaga Ball, a game that is oriented in Israel and is the variation of dodgeball, where players strike the ball with their hand and other players attempt to avoid being hit below the knee, and whereas in addition to his participation in the Scouts BSA, Dylan J. Picard has demonstrated leadership by teaching merit badge classes for younger scouts and volunteering as a student teacher at St. Mary's Star of the Seas Presule Program, and whereas Dylan J. Picard attends Farmington High School in Farmington where he is a member of the Audio-Visual Club and the Esports Club, and whereas Dylan J. Picard is the goalie for the Avon Canton Farmington Youth Hockey Association, and whereas as a result of Dylan J. Picard's work, the lives of the children of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now, therefore, be it resolved, on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Dylan J. Picard our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim February 9th, 2022, as Dylan J. Picard Day in Farmington, Connecticut, dated at Farmington, Connecticut this eighth day of February 2022.
Thank you. Mike?
Do it at the end, just all three?
No, just while they're up there. Why don't you go, let's go. Just do one at a time, if you like.
So, mine's a little briefer, Mr. Chair. So, Dylan, congratulations for all your hard work, and this is truly recognition that you deserve. So, from the State of Connecticut, official citation from the General Assembly introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Exum, Senator Slapp, Senator Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Dylan James Picard in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work you've done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion, expresses the hope for continued success given on this 11th day of January, we got it done ahead of time, at the State Capitol, and it's signed by Martin Looney, President of the Senate, Matt Ritter, Speaker of the House, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of the State. Dylan, congratulations on a job well done.
Okay, our second Eagle Scout proclamation is for Jackson Williams. Keith, who will you hand over?
All right. So, my proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Jackson Williams from Troop 170 Scouts BSA recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout, and whereas Jackson identified the need for restoration of Chapel Hill at Whining Trails, and whereas Jackson Williams used his Eagle Scout project to restore the Chapel Hill space at Whining Trails for the membership and public to enjoy for years to come, and whereas Jackson Williams' project involved removing and replacing the outdoor stage decking and a new support choice, re-landscaping of both the seating area and all the trails leading into Chapel Hill with new mulch, and whereas in addition to his extensive Eagle Scout project, Jackson Williams has demonstrated leadership with his role as Boy Scout Quartermaster, Assistant Patrol Leader, and Boy Scout Troop Guide, and whereas Jackson Williams attends Farmington High School in Farmington where he is a member of the Spring and Fall Varsity Crew, and is a Summer and Fall Youth Travel Basketball All-Star, and whereas as a result of Jackson Williams' work, the lives of the public of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Jackson Williams, or, excuse me, we hereby extend Jackson Williams our best wishes and hereby proclaim February 10th, 2022, as Jackson Williams Day in Farmington, Connecticut, dated at Farmington, Connecticut this the eighth day of February 2022.
Okay, Mike, you're on.
on a job well done. So, State of Connecticut, General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Exum, Senator Slapp, Senator Rick Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Jackson Williams in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work you've done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and your perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success and is dated January 11th, 2022 at the State Capitol, signed by Martin Looney, President of the Senate, Matt Ritter, Speaker of the House, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of the State. Jackson, congrats on a job well done. Nice.
And our third and final Eagle Scout presentation of the evening. I am taking executive privilege in doing this one myself. First, I'd like to say to all the Eagle Scouts, it's always a tremendous honor for us to be able to get up here and give these presentations because there are just an inordinate number of Eagle Scouts we seem to produce in Farmington, and the goodwill and the good projects you've done over the years are just a tremendous value to the town as well. That being said, knowing Matthew's, come on up, family, his dad, and having seen some of the good work that you've done in the past, some of which we'll talk about here, fundraising for the playground, some of the other things, it's just the entire family does a great job for the town, and we appreciate that. That being said, I'll start with the "whereas's." Whereas the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Matthew Table from Troop 170 Scouts BSA recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout, and whereas Matthew Table identified a need for revitalizing the grounds of Farmington's historic old stone house and chapel property, and whereas Matthew Table used his Eagle Scout project to revitalize the property to enhance the appearance and make it self-sustaining, and whereas Matthew Table's project involved removing a significant amount of brush and overgrowth, installing a new base for a large exterior stone step, refreshing 145 feet of stone perimeter around the building, as well as completing many other tasks to help rejuvenate the grounds, and whereas in addition to his participation in the Scouts BSA, Matthew Table has demonstrated leadership as a triathlon coach and as a lifeguard and swim instructor at YMCA Camp Chase, and whereas Matthew Table is a talented musician who plays the trumpet in the Farmington High School Jazz Band and the Navaley Community Baptist Church Orchestra, and whereas Matthew Table's expansive philanthropic work includes volunteering at Amber Woods and Middle Woods of Farmington, volunteering at the summer children's camp through his church, fundraising for Connecticut's Children's Medical Center, raising money for a Farmington Elementary School playground, and supporting the Blue Bag Challenge to thank Farmington police officers, and whereas as a result of Matthew Table's work, the lives of the public of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend to Matthew Table our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim February 11th, 2022, as Matthew Table Day in Farmington, Connecticut, dated at Farmington, Connecticut this eighth day of February 2022. C.J. Thomas, Chair, Farmington Town Council.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll just add to something that you said. When I ask for these citations at the legislature, they always laugh. They think, no, you can't possibly have that many Eagle Scouts in Farmington. And I tell them, yes, we do. We have that many because of the dedication of the parents and the troop leaders. So, it's an impressive achievement. So, Matthew, here we go. State of Connecticut, General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Exum, Senator Slapp, Senator Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Matthew David Table in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work you've done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and your perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, and it's dated January 11th, 2022 at the State Capitol in Hartford. And, once again, if you haven't heard it by now, it's signed by President Protam of the Senate, Martin Looney, Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of the State. Congratulations. Nice job, Matthew.
Thank you all once again for joining us. We are now moving on to our state legislators. And I believe we have Mike and Derek, Senator Slapp, and Representative D'Amico. Please join us at the table in the front. Yeah, if you want to slip out, now's the time to slip out. I don't want to shortchange our representatives, but...
Those kids have earned enough.
I didn't know I was getting yours.
Oh, my God. How you doing, Mike?
Lucky, lucky, I'm proud.
Okay. All right.
Kat, you're gonna put Senator Lopes on?
Same thing happened at the Board of Education.
I know. It's great to be loved, you know?
Make your room for all the big ideas.
Kat, you're gonna put Senator Lopes on?
Yep.
If not, I can give him permission to talk.
Okay. We have Senator Lopes on line. There you go. Got you on video, too.
By noon, I would have been there in person to double the attendance.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you all coming in. This is a nice tradition we have. We get a chance to all sit down together and talk, and I think we probably will open up. Just see if you all have any opening comments, questions, and we'll start from there.
No, well, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. Thank you for having us here. Congratulations to all of you who are in this position and who are serving and who are in good campaigns, and it's great to be in this partnership with you and to work on behalf of the residents of Farmington. So, congratulations to all of you, and this is a great tradition. I think it was two years ago we were here on Valentine's Day, so my wife was very pleased that it worked out.
Yes.
That it did. Just the other day, actually, I was at IR Middle School talking to a number of eighth graders when we were talking about government and about the role of state government, local government versus federal government. And by the way, the students were amazing. And then we had a great conversation about the Electoral College and about bipartisanship and all sorts of wonderful things. So, anyway, I just had a wonderful experience with Farmington Schools this week. You know, we've had this conversation in previous years where we had some tough conversations, right, and tough talks about, I mean, and the state was in a very different situation budget-wise, or it is now, and I think there's a number of reasons why we are where we are. The federal funding doesn't hurt, of course. We made a lot of tough decisions over the past few years. We have something, I won't get into all the details, but a volatility clause which we passed, which has really helped force us, the legislature, to save and to start paying down debt, which is a good thing. So, our bond rating has increased for the first time in 20 years, and so we're in a healthier place. And so, I'm pleased that we're having this conversation in that context and that the Farmington delegation was helped, has, you know, been able to deliver this past budget. One of the biggest increases in pilot funding in the entire state as far as percentages goes was to Farmington. So, I think that was terrific. And, you know, so now we enter session, which starts tomorrow, and, you know, in a much better budget place, there are lots of proposals to, for tax relief, for tax cuts. You've been reading about them. And we're gonna have to, you know, really kick the can on those and see what makes the most sense. At the same time, and I think this is important from my perspective, and I'm sure probably for yours, too, is to have some reliability for the towns, right, some consistent kind of budgeting. So, we don't want to do something, hey, it's an election year, let's do X, and then have to undo it, you know, whatever, years later. So, I think we just need to be responsible, but we're gonna look hard at those and see what we can do on that end. There, I do not see any proposals, certainly for some of the things that we've been discussing in the past that we did not support, but like teachers' pensions coming on to the towns, cuts in ECS or funding that would disrupt your budget cycle. So, I do not anticipate those even being proposed. It's kind of more on the flip side, where you may have seen that the governor proposed capping the car tax, right, and where would that fall in terms of what the mill rate would be, how would that work, et cetera. Towns are always leery about that. The state says, hey, we'll reimburse you for that part, and you're like, uh-huh, will you? And for how long? And will it become the new pilot, right, et cetera. So, I just, we need to make sure as a state that we're keeping our promises and things. So, why don't I leave it there, and that's actually a good segue into something else that I think Representative D'Amico might want to touch on, which is keeping our promises in terms of the high school. Have I set that up for you?
You did. That was a nice setup.
Should be on.
This thing on as they say.
Yep, that's good.
Yes, it is. Okay. So, I just want to echo what Derek had to say. Congratulations one and all, and I mean that sincerely. I served on this body for several years.
Is that right where Johnny's sitting right now?
That's the seat, that's the seat where the drip, the leak was right there. That's okay. You do not have a nice, comfortable seat, Johnny. Anyhow, congratulations. It's a volunteer job, and you do it well, and you will continue to do it well. So, I give you a lot of credit, every single one. So, but what Derek had alluded to was a, I guess, a little bit of a discrepancy in reimbursement for the high school project, and my understanding is that certain promises were made about the amount of reimbursement for a particular portion of the high school that's being renovated, I guess, the 900 wing in particular, and the, well, I'll do it in the shorthand way. What you were promised is what we will try to get for you. That's the short answer. So, my understanding is that there was some kind of promise made, and then the promise was withdrawn for various reasons, and what you were promised is what Derek and Rick and I and Tammy Exum will try to accomplish.
And what you were promised is what Derek and Rick and I and Tammy Exum will try to accomplish. And everything else that Derek had mentioned, you know, makes a lot of sense as far as, you know, we do, we are in much better financial shape in the state than we've been in a long time. But, you know, we still have to be careful. And there are many proposals for tax relief involving property tax relief, sales tax reduction, child tax credit. All those things are gonna be in the mix. I don't have a crystal ball, but, so I can't tell you, you know, what's gonna happen there, but all those things will be a part of the discussion. So I think I'll leave it there, because I'm sure Rick wants to say something at some point here.
Absolutely. Let's go. Rick, can you hear us?
I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. It's all yours.
Wonderful. As I say, a little bit duplicative of what the other two gentlemen spoke of, but I just want to emphasize the position we're in. As a legislator who's been there for 10 years, going through nine years of horrible budget shortfalls, the issues that are most prevalent now are our rainy day fund, $3 billion plus. It's the largest statistically and numerically in the state's history. Someone like me, that's really important. That ties right into the next thing of what I like to call thoughtful and pragmatic legislating, which is we're paying down our debt with this budget surplus. We're using quite a bit of it last year. And I assume we're gonna use quite a bit of it, over $1 billion this year, to further pay down our debt and our pension obligations. This will only benefit the state for years to come, decades to come. You know, Derek mentioned, you know, potential ideas in lowering property taxes and car taxes. Those are out there this year for discussion too. But lastly, I also want to remind everyone that a couple of years ago, we put into motion phasing out the income taxes from pensions and social security. This is quite an important thing, especially to seniors. Every year for the next couple of years, these, the taxes on these two things, the state income tax on these two items are being phased out slowly, and I believe in two or three years. If we don't accelerate it, they will be completely phased out. These are crucial things to a lot of people. And lastly, I do want to touch on one little tidbit for the high school. I did speak to one of the chairs of the Education Committee. Believe it or not, he was aware of this situation, and he was enthusiastically in support of submitting the language to make Farmington whole. That is one, that is the first stumbling block that is going in the right direction. And it definitely makes me feel a little bit more confident that we may be able to get the language in this year to make the town whole on the funding for the high school. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. With that, I think I'm just gonna go down the row for questions. I'll start to my left, Johnny, and we'll work this way.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming here today. Senator Slapp, I'd say thank you. My daughter is in eighth grade. She's in the back of the room, and she came home and told me all about the visit to school. So I want to say thank you for taking time out of your day to talk to the students. If she's coming home and talking about it, it meant something to her. So as Mike knows, I've been on the, on both high school building committees for probably six and a half or seven years now. The latest one, which passed, obviously, and we're going through the motions. I wasn't gonna rehash, you know, the 900 wing. I heard that you guys got questions about it at the Board of Ed meeting. My questions were more on the actual reimbursement rates and the formula that, do you know, or do you, can you elaborate on how that formula comes about? And just where I'm coming from is, you know, I've been told in the past, and rightfully so, that Farmington gets less because we're a very fortunate and more affluent town, and that makes a lot of sense. But if you have any idea where the, or how that's put together, who comes up with that decision, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, it's in, and Rick, if you want to jump in, because Rick and I were just talking about this too, but it's, I believe it's in statute, and it's based on your, your, um, data about Dirk and about the relative wealth. And I know no town feels wealthy, but it's based on various indicators of kind of how distressed the municipality is, ability to pay, mill rate, that kind of thing. And, you know, it's been fairly consistent, I believe, for a while, but there can be tweaks to it, depending on how good a case one can make. In fact, at the Board of Education meeting that we were at, Representative, you know, D'Amico, we were all having a conversation about how to try to just maximize reimbursement rates for towns like Farmington. And I know, and I will say, and I don't want to get off out of your specific question, but I think there's other ways too where we can hopefully be even more, you know, effective to increase reimbursement for towns that incur cost, right? In some cases that are like, special education is a big one, where the state doesn't do what it's supposed to do in terms of fully funding that grant. And I know to fully fund it would be about $60 million or so across the state. That would be another area. I'm not trying to stray from your specific question, but... Rick, do you want to add anything?
No, you nailed it. I know it is in statute, and I know it's been, these rates have been stable for a very long time, based on the financial condition of each municipality. But to go back to the base of his question, do I know how they were originally formulated? I do not. But we could definitely find that out fairly quickly and get back to you.
If you don't mind, that'd be good, just 'cause, you know, digging around, I know the new rates were just published, and I, you know, obviously looking at comparable towns and sister towns around us and where we're at, you know, Farmington, and this is right off the state website, we have a, you know, median household income. And I'm sure that's only just one measure of how this comes about. But we have a median household income of $93,000, and the new rate is about 19.6%. But we have a sister town Burlington that has $127,000, which is 37% more median household income. And they're getting 15% more reimbursement than we are, apples for apples. Avon's at 131, or almost 40% more household income, and they're only 2% less. Canton is about $88,000, just underneath, but their reimbursement rate is, you know, just shy of 9% more. Same thing with Simsbury, same thing with West Hartford. And I'm not gonna bore you with all the numbers. We can talk afterwards or at another time about this, but that's why I'm kind of interested in seeing, you know, where these reimbursement comes, because when I start to look at, you know, you know, that term, wealthy towns versus, you know, more needy towns. And I totally get that. But I do think there should be some kind of way where we're compared, you know, in situations with sister towns in very comparable areas. My next question was, have you heard of any times where reimbursement rates have been introduced or increased, you know, on special exception or anything like that?
I think there have been instances where it has been increased, you know, for special reasons. Again, I don't know, is this...
We can hear you.
Okay. So, and I believe it's a function of if the town provides, and I think Derek was alluding to this earlier, if the town provides some kind of special service on a regional basis, offers some kind of programs within the region that other schools or other districts don't offer, that kids from other towns can take advantage of. I believe that's part of, that factors into special, you know, designation. But I don't know if Farmington is able to take advantage of that. I mean, I know, you know, right off the top, Farmington was one of the first towns to participate in the Open Choice Program over 50 years ago. I think that's a feather in our cap. Whether we get, you know, special recognition or special designation for it, I think it's a positive thing for everybody. And then Farmington has a great special ed program that can't be matched by many of the towns around us. So, you know, I will try to argue that and see if that gets us anywhere as far as, you know, extra, you know, reimbursement from the state. And I won't, I won't promise you anything, but I think those are a couple of examples of, you know, what enables towns to get a little extra.
No, understood. And we appreciate that. And obviously, you know, for us sitting in this seat, you know, we have three primary jobs, and it's public safety, budgets, and our schools. And we try to excel at all of them. I was, you know, during our work group meetings, and I've had them every week for the last, I don't know, year or so, we've gone into value engineering for some of the price increases in the tune of 10% of the project or just under 9%, $10 million. And a lot of the discussion that came up with some of our partners was a high school that's gonna be going up just before ours, which is Torrington. And Torrington High School goes out to bid, I think it's only three or four months before us, so we're talking about maybe some of the subcontractors will be more aggressive if they don't get the first job, that kind of thing. So I went and read up on Torrington a little bit, and it, just in the recent few months, they've had another referendum to go back to bid for an additional $20 million on about $150 million school because of a lot of the, you know, volatility in the marketplace and some of the things like that. The state ended up doing, so they went to referendum, they got the extra 20 million, but the state upped their reimbursement rate from 65 to 85%, bringing in almost 37-point-something million. And I'm going off of various news stories, I didn't just read one, but, you know, and I can't, you know, I'm not gonna take credit for those numbers, those are just the information I'm given. So I don't know if Farmington would be in that boat since we're so close to that. All this extra materials, and I'll tell you, steel, and as you know, Mike, I'm in the construction business from the residential side. This last year and a half has not been fun. And it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I wasn't asking on behalf of taxpayers of Farmington, you know, if there's an opportunity here to see if there's some, if we could take a similar look, because we're running into the same types of situations where we can't get materials. If we can, they're gonna secure them, and we're going out to bid in the next couple of months. And things are pretty much gonna get cemented in by the end of the year. So the timing actually ends up being perfect, and I really would appreciate if you guys would look into this on our behalf.
You got it.
I'd like to address this a little bit. This is delicate, because as you know, with the whole school construction, how this situation came about is openly being played out in the newspaper now. And so I'm gonna try to phrase this in a way that doesn't, doesn't sound strange. It is my understanding, I can't say this for fact, but it is my understanding that the additional 10% reimbursement rate that was promised to Farmington that caused this whole issue was an attempt to address the changing marketplace and some of the problems with bidding, to give Farmington an additional $915,000, more than they normally would receive. So from this one conversation I had with one person earlier today, I believe going back historically to last year was when other towns like Torrington and a couple others received additional percentage bumps. I believe this effort was a attempt to give Farmington a 10% or, yeah, 10% bump, or, yeah, $10 million, a million dollar bump in the project, if that makes sense.
Thank you. No more questions from me. Rafina?
All right. So I also have questions about the reimbursement rate. So when we were going out to our residents and we were like, we really need this school, and it is a priority, nobody can argue with that, we promised them, you know, X, this is how much it's going to cost. And now the state has a surplus, we just heard that a couple of minutes ago, and it seems very unfair to ask the residents now to go back into their pocket and have that number not be what we promised. So I'm just asking if there's something residents can do, like, do we write letters to the state? Do we write letters to you? How is it that we can get all of the opinions that we have directed to the right people in state government? Because we all pay taxes, and, you know, Johnny's pointing about Torrington and different towns and the reimbursement rates we got. And I remember sitting in on these meetings during the building committee, meetings before the referendum, and I think it was 28 and 20, 30%, we were talking about 28%. Guilford built a school, was that six years ago, maybe? And their reimbursement rate was in the 30s, if I remember correctly. So I guess there are a couple of thoughts here. One, what is the impetus for changing the reimbursement rates all of a sudden? Is it because, like, things have changed in state government, so therefore they can't reimburse towns? Or is it specifically the wealthier towns like Farmington? And we really have to kind of dial the wealthiness back. It shouldn't be because I live just across the line from here, I get to pay, you know, 25% more for something that is necessary for our town. This institution is not only for our town, it's for our community, for our students and our community, and it's what we need. So how do we get that advocated up the line? I know you'll do your jobs, I thank you all for doing that, but what is it that residents can do, if anything, at this point, to advocate for our state getting the maximum that we can?
I think you just did it, Rafina. But no, I mean, certainly you and all the other residents are welcome to send, you know, emails to me or letters to me. A little bit, I think I want to defer to Rick on this one, only because he's had the conversation with the, with the co-chair of the Education Committee. But before I do that, the other thing that I think I want to mention, and we've talked about this in the past, CJ, is Farmington has a really outstanding tax base because of the industry that's within our town. So I know, you know, it's always difficult when you make these town-by-town comparisons. So there, yes, there are many towns around us that are pretty well up, but they don't have nearly the industrial and commercial base that we have here in Farmington. And I used to refer to it as, we're victims of our own success. So would you rather trade, you know, the outstanding tax base that we have, you know, for something less and therefore get more money from the state? You probably wouldn't want to do that, but that's kind of the situation that we're in in general.
Right, but, but Mike, that argument is kind of lost in your average resident, right? They're going to their pockets, we told them, what was it, $400 for the first year that they're gonna pay in taxes. On average, whatever it was, $300. I don't remember exactly right now. So now we're telling them, we've all paid taxes to the state, right? And now we're, the state's coming back and saying, yeah, sorry, now you're gonna have to pay more potentially, because we're not gonna give you the reimbursement that you were promised. So like, leaving all those distinctions aside, your average resident is gonna, you know, not gonna be very happy hearing that our state, with a budget surplus of $3 billion, I know they're not all the same things, and we're not putting them in the same bucket, but like, how do we explain this to residents?
Well, again, let's be clear. I think, I think the amount that we're talking about in this, you know, disparity that we're talking about involves $900,000, you know, on a $130 million project. So I just want to put it in a little bit in perspective. I'm not saying that $900,000 isn't a lot of money, but in the big scheme of things, this was a small, I don't know what to call it. It was a promise that was made erroneously or wrongly, or however you want to phrase it, and we are going to make, and Rick pointed out, and Derek pointed out, we're gonna make every effort to try to fix that. So I just don't want people to watch it and say, oh, my God, you know, is this like a bajillion dollars? No.
Right, well, see, it's already out, though, because it's just, yeah.
I want to put it in perspective.
I would add, and I don't know if Senator Close wants to jump in, but that a good message to say you're working hand in glove with the state delegation to fix what happened, and we're doing that, and we had a great meeting with the town officials just the other day. We brought in Representative Pettit, who most likely represents part of Farmington, so we're working on a bipartisan basis as well, one team, all of you, all together. So I think that's a good message for constituents. And then you could also tell them that, well, the $950,000 is a one shot, that we were able to, again, working as a team, get a reoccurring increase, I think a 70% increase in pilot, which is about $1 million every single year. So that's another good message for constituents. That's what I'll be talking about. Senator, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just want to unfortunately answer her question with the same answer I gave to Mr. Carrier. This $900,000 was already an understanding of the situation you're in, and an additional amount of money from last year's deliberations to give to the town of Farmington. The town of Farmington's reimbursement rate is 18% roughly. The state employee who offered this up, it was part of a, not just him, but a part of a larger effort to give Farmington more money and a higher reimbursement rate of 28%. So I know that it's a conceptual thing, we're looking at this, like, oh, we were promised this money, and maybe we won't get it. The reality of the situation is, have a reimbursement rate written in the statute, and this was his effort to give you more money to help you fund this project. So it is hard, and because it's, it kind of rolled out backwards and there was such confusion, it is our duty now this year to try to make the town whole, and we're fully committed to it.
But just to clarify, it was 28%, more than 28% on the whole project. It was 28% that was offered, Rick, on a small portion of the project, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Renovation portion. So I totally understand. So there's a distinction between a renovation and build new. So when we decided, or the town decided, there was one rate for build new, which I think was like 20...
18 and change.
Yeah. And then the other one was... Yeah, and then the other one was renovation, which was, I thought, 28%.
28%, correct.
So that's where people, if they've been following the building project along, they're like, well, wait a second, you've just down 10%, right? And I understand, there's a distinction that needs to be made and people need to understand, but a lot of people are kind of like, what's going on, we're near the month. You know, it's hard when you're sitting up here and you're like, it's kind of out of our hands. So I'm just advocating for making sure that our residents, one, understand what's going on, and two, if they want to, be able to advocate for what was promised and what should really be available to our town.
Again, anyone is welcome to write to me, to write to Derek, to write to Rick. I don't know if we want to go beyond that, as far as, you know, we're handling on our end at the Capitol.
Okay. Don't worry, we won't start a picket line just yet.
Well, no, I don't know what to say, you know, but we hear it, a lot of them clear, we're aware of it.
Okay. All right, I had one other question about electric vehicle charging stations. So I heard that the state has initiatives to start that, and Johnny actually is on the Green Efforts Committee. Do you guys know, have any more information? Could we like apply for grant funding? Is there anything like that for the town of Farmington? It'd be great to have a charging station outside of Town Hall, like they do in West Hartford, if we're talking about comparing different towns again.
Yeah, I don't serve on the Transportation Committee and on the Environment Committee, and I know there's a lot of proposals about expanding electric charging stations, and some are caught up in the so-called Tesla bill, which is, the proponents obviously don't call it the Tesla bill, but it is about, you know, allowing direct sales, et cetera. So I haven't checked out more information, see if it's something, I mean, I don't think it's fully baked yet, considering the session doesn't start until tomorrow, but I think that's a great, great idea.
Yeah, there was an.
In our, tomorrow, we have a larger presentation to the Appropriations Committee from Secretary McCall of OPM, and we got a brief snapshot picture of it today, and one of the listed priorities was money going towards electric charging stations throughout the state. So it does seem to be a priority in this year's budget.
Okay, that would be great. And last question, what's happening at Battery Park? Battery Park?
Patterson.
Patterson Park? I call it Battery for a different reason. Is that happening like in the next little bit, or is there a timeline?
As for people who are not aware, last year, I believe it was $10 million we were able to get allocated to the reconstruction of Patterson Park, which is, you know, straddles the border of Farmington, New Britain, but is strangely owned by the city of Hartford. Needless to say, it was one of the more complicated things we've ever worked on, with support from all the legislators of all the towns involved. And we were largely due to the help of Speaker Matt Ritter, able to secure $10 million for a full renovation of that park, which is truly a gem of the area and been underused for decades. It's going to be a slow process. I had heard rumors that construction should start this upcoming construction season, the spring, the summer. Do not hold me to that, that is my deepest hope, but the thoughts were that construction would start this year.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Yes. Thank you. So starting tomorrow, I see on your site that we're going to be talking about traffic safety, and speeding is a big thing going on in the state, not only in the town. Traffic deaths are at the highest in motor vehicles since, I believe, 1994 at states. Can you tell me more of what they're looking to do in order to stop this problem?
Again, I am not on the Transportation Committee, so I don't know the specifics, but I know that it is a problem, you know, a lot of it, from what I understand, is related to, I shouldn't say a lot of it, some of it is related to the pandemic and people's behavior that has been altered as a result of the pandemic. Some of it may be related to the number of troopers on highways. Again, I'm sure they're going to have a discussion about this, you know, in the Transportation Committee. Those are the two first things that come to mind. But it is a problem, Joe, and you know, that's, again, I'm not on that committee, but I'll get you some information about it, you know, as we go forward, and thank you for identifying it as a problem.
Very much, and that obviously goes into the next part of our Police Accountability Bill about secondary traffic stops. Can you explain more of what they're looking to do for that?
Have you had a disadvantage, Joe, about secondary traffic stops?
Yep, it's right in there, I think it's item number seven. They're looking to talk about secondary traffic stops, eliminating them based on racial profiling, stuff like that.
What's are you looking at? I just wanted to make sure we're working on this.
It's right here, it's a state website for 2022, if you go into, hold on, give me one second. Let me find it for you.
Does it major issues? There's a report about issues that might be coming up, is that it?
Yes. It's going to be outlined, I'll leave my glasses here for you.
While you're looking, I can tell you that the major issues are, that's the Office of, I think it's OLR, Office of Legislative Research, puts together this where they ask every legislator, send out an email and say, hey, if you have any issues or anything that you like to bring up, or you think, you know, should be debated this coming session, let us know, and we'll put it in the list. So I would just say that because something is in there, you know, doesn't even necessarily mean it's going to be a raised bill, honestly. It's up to the committee chairs to do that. We have the shortest session, we're looking at the shortest session by, essentially by statute that's allowable, I think it's just less than 12 weeks. So there's going to be, there's a lot of issues that are in there that are not going to see the light of day. I don't know whether that one will or not, I don't serve in the Judiciary Committee, but you know, regardless, if there's issues about criminal justice and they start to get traction, I'm sure we'll all hear a lot about them. But I know the governor just came out with a multi-pronged proposal in terms of juvenile justice and investing in state troopers, new classes, et cetera. So I do think those things will get a lot of attention, a lot of traction.
Okay, yeah, because I'm still looking for it, but it went right into traffic stops. So basically, my understanding of it is someone's driving down the road, doesn't have a headlight on at the middle of the night, they do not want you to stop that party now, and advise them of that, that's a secondary traffic stop. So that leads me into, how does that protect our public from someone driving down the road at 2:00 in the morning with no headlights on? Like, you know, metal road, no lights, what do we do? Just let the person go by? Just let them drive by and hit something? Because secondary stops is.
My recollection is that this whole idea of cutting back on secondary traffic stops was to try, and again, this goes back for a year and a half, to try to stem the spread of COVID. So the less interaction, the less between the public safety officials and the public, you know, it would cut down on the possible transmission. Now that we're in a different stage, or you know, certainly, yeah, a different stage, maybe we need to take another look at that. But I think that was the idea, is to try to cut down on the interaction that would spread the disease. Again, Transportation Committee is going to look at it, Joe.
All right.
I'll find out and report back.
Yeah, please do, because I think it's not the Transportation, I think it's in the law enforcement part, part of the Police Accountability Bill that it falls under. And again, I think, you know, if we're already complaining about traffic stops for speeding decreasing, and now you want to propose eliminating stops for taillights, headlights, tinted windows, cracked windshields, broken exhaust, how does that help anybody? I think that just increases more, like you said, it's stated right there, in fact, we're at the highest level for motor vehicle accidents due to speeding. Now we're just giving more reason to let vehicles go by and not stop.
This is where I get to say my thing that I say every year, and Derek alluded to it, every year, there are somewhere between 4,000 and 5,000 bills that get proposed by different legislators. There's 187 legislators up there, and everybody thinks they have the world's greatest ideas. So just because it's been proposed, doesn't mean that it's going to go anywhere. I take it you don't want that proposal to go anywhere, Joe?
Well, I don't think anybody would want to, who feels safe driving on the streets.
Pardon me?
I don't think anybody will want that bill to go forward if they want to be safe on the streets. And if you have a short list, you know, your list is not long on your website for how many things are coming in front of you. So it's not like we're dealing with 120 things, there's about 19 things on there that are stated on the website that I can see.
Again, you have a disadvantage, I don't see this list, I, you know, I'm not sure who put together that list and what it's in reference to, but I can tell you that there will be somewhere around 3,000 or 4,000 bills introduced, so don't hold us to just those 19 that you're reading off the list, I guess that's what I would say.
These are what you guys hear more than we should.
I know.
Well, as Derek mentioned, that's what the Office of Legislative Research earmarked, because those are some of the preliminary things that came in over the last couple of months, that some legislators are interested in talking about.
Well, obviously, out of all, like you said, you have listed, if that's on your already highlighted list, that's probably in the forefront of it.
I just want to jump in here, I think there's a lack of understanding in how the legislative process works. We can't discuss something you're looking at that someone mentioned that really isn't part of the official process of what we're doing. We haven't started session yet, session's tomorrow. Nothing you're reading is something that we are proposing, or as far as we know, anyone's proposing. They're just things written down somewhere. So like you said, this may be an idea, it may not be an idea, but we're not in a position to, we can't even debate something that is not proposed in a session that has not started yet. It's an idea, if you're asking us, what you could do is ask us, if something like this comes up, would we support it or not support it? Then we could probably have a little bit more, a conversation that's just not all over the place. Because I know exactly what you're talking about, the dark tinted windows, the cracked windshields, all these sorts of things, and you know, personally, I'm not supportive of, you know, doing away with that. But there may be people who are. But once again, we haven't started session yet, so it's not something we can have a debate on, nor should it be framed as something we're supportive of at this point.
Well, we're having the conversation. I'm good.
Okay. Keith?
So we're the session starting tomorrow, and as you guys just said, there's a lot of bills and things that get thrown around. Can, and thank you for being here, sorry for not starting there. Can you each give me your one or two legislative priorities for this coming session? And, you know, briefly, I don't want to, you know, keep you all night with that, but.
Yeah, some of our priorities are dictated by our committee assignment. So I'm Chair of the Higher Education Employment Advancement Committee. One of our priorities is going to be, you know, dealing with college affordability and accessibility, and I know that's kind of a broad topic. Another one is, you know, we constantly are trying to help UConn attract research dollars, which of course helps, you know, not only Farmington, but the entire state. And UConn is a handicap because of the fringe that they pay, it's kind of complicated, but on just state employees past fringe, essentially, and they're really our handicap, because that's a higher cost compared to other states, so it's harder to attract research dollars. So that's kind of one example. You know, on the Environment Committee, I'm Vice Chair of the Environment Committee, we're working to change some of our clean air standards when it comes to heavy-duty trucks, and so that's going to be something that we're going to be looking at as well. GAE Committee, Government Registration and Election, we're going to continue to try to make some good voting reforms. And then I'm on the Finance Committee too, and I talked a little bit about the tax policy, and I do think there are some opportunities for kind of smart targeted tax relief, and we just want to make sure that it's sustainable, as I mentioned before. So those are, those are some of mine, and I actually just have an op-ed in the Hartford Current today about trying to repeal what I call the, what many people call the gender tax, which is, you know, women unfairly pay more for a lot of things as far as services go in our economy, and so I want to be able to try to change that.
That was a good list, but certainly not an exhaustive list. So I will just tell you, Keith and everybody, that my understanding is that mental health, particularly children's mental health, is going to be at the top of the list for leadership in both the Senate and the House. So, and certainly, that's certainly something that affects all of us, because, you know, we all have kids, and we have kids in the school system, and so you can expect robust discussion about ways to try to ameliorate the children's mental health crisis that's going on right now. Derek mentioned, he's on the Vice Chair of the Environment Committee. I'm also on the Environment Committee, and he mentioned about clean air standards, and I know that the Environment Committee is also going to be concerned about waste and waste disposal, which is, we have an impending crisis here in the state, how to get rid of our solid waste, and you know, that's something that needs to be addressed. And then climate resilience, particularly on the shoreline, and how do we deal with, you know, what's coming, you know, in the future with regards to coastal resiliency. What else did I want to mention here? The opioid crisis, which is still with us and has been with us for a while, I know that on the Public Health Committee, which I'm on, we're going to be dealing with that issue. And housing, we have a severe housing shortage, you know, here in the state of Connecticut, and, you know, we have a new Chair of the Housing, a new Co-Chair of the Housing Committee, and I know that that's going to be a pretty important topic that he will be able to. So I don't know, Rick has anything to add to that?
Senator Loeb?
Hey, Mike, if you don't speak into the microphone, I can't hear you.
Oh, shit.
You didn't say that in the mic either, that's all right.
That, you spoke in the microphone.
Yes, as Derek mentioned, a lot of our priorities are tied into the committees we chair and serve on. I am the Chair of the Housing Committee, so obviously, my biggest issue this year is the lack of affordable housing, it's a crushing issue in Connecticut. House prices have gone up, rental properties and rents have gone up dramatically, there are large numbers of people who cannot afford to live, contributes to the homeless population, and that is definitely something we need to address and work on, and we have multiple plans in trying to leverage federal dollars to take care of that. Another issue in the Housing Committee is always landlord-tenant relations. As many people know, we're part-time legislators, we have day jobs, my day job is I'm a property manager and landlord, and I deal with the ins and outs of that industry. And in the Housing Committee, there's a multitude of issues, trying to solve some of these landlord-tenant problems, which also tie into affordability, and of course, having safe, clean housing from a safety perspective and code issue as well. Outside of the Housing Committee, my two biggest concerns, it sounds strange, I'm a landlord property manager, but by trade, I'm a social worker in MSW from UConn, I'm concerned about our nonprofit sector, especially in the social services. They provide a lot of the mental health, a lot of the childcare, various safety net programs for people in need. They are financially being crushed, last year was their first increase in over 10 years. It definitely helped, this year, we're looking to try to help them a little bit more. You know, they service the disabled community on various levels, and these are funds, I believe, well spent. Another issue I care a lot about, that's more universal, is the childcare issue. We're facing a childcare crunch in the state, childcare providers are not paid very well. Last we checked, I think yesterday, over 700 help-wanted ads out there, care providers and institutions, many of them are closing classrooms, closing the whole facility, they cannot get enough staff to keep the stay open. They are a bottom-tier issue of our economy. If people can't find childcare, they can't go to work, and it'll just compound this issue we're having with a lot of industries not being able to find employees. So those are two issues I definitely want the state to address, use some of the surplus money to shore up these industries, there are ones that were hurt severely during the pandemic, and I believe they deserve a lot of attention now. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, so, and then my last question, sorry. Can you each just tell me where you are with, I know Thursday, there's going to be some discussion about the governor's executive powers, where you guys are on that, if you are in favor or against extending those?
Yeah, reverse order, Rick, do you want to go first on this?
I'm happy to, if you don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I guess that's what this is about, so go ahead.
You break me out of my pattern, you're going to get me all confused.
I know.
We all know this is a contentious subject on a couple of the issues, but the reality is, there's a reason for some of these orders to. But the, the reality is, there's a reason for some of these orders to exist going forward. One of which being access to federal money, if we have some of these emergency orders in place. Another one that gives the Commissioner of Public Health a lot of discretion. One of the things I care, one thing I care about personally as a social worker is, it allows the Commissioner to give temporary approval of healthcare workers, social workers, nurses from out of state who are certified in other states to work in Connecticut to help shore up our shortfall in these, these professions while there's an emergency. So unless that emergency orders, if it's not in place, we, we won't be able to access this pool of healthcare workers and social workers that we desperately need on a lot of different levels. So a lot of these functional types of executive orders are absolutely no brainers, common sense things that we need to do as a state and keep moving forward. But in all honesty, you know, some of the rhetoric about the governor having more power than he should, none of these, none of these orders that we're, I believe will be pushing forward next week in the Senate, give the governor any more power than, than he already has. And I think that's been a misnomer. You can't say things like take away executive power from a governor. He is the executive. He has that power already, should we want to give it to him or not. So in essence, I, I believe these, I like to call them these no brainer common, practical sense, practical common sense issues that will help the state of Connecticut polish off this pandemic, hopefully, are things we need to continue to move for, approve forward.
I would add, I anticipate that, and the House is going in Thursday, right, to vote on this, and then the Senate will be next week, that, that the legislation that will pass will essentially mean that the, the governor will not have any new executive authority. So he won't be able to implement new executive orders. There's eleven that are going to be codified, as, as Rick mentioned. The one that's getting the most attention is obviously the mask, right, the masks in schools. And we had a Senate caucus today, and we had a very robust conversation about it. My understanding of what's going forward, and, and, you know, you can tell me if this is consistent with yours, is that in a few weeks, right, you know, the, you've read this in the paper, that the governor said that it should be up to the local towns, right, to decide that. And we're getting lots and lots of emails, people on both sides of the issues about that, as you might imagine. What I think will probably happen is that the governor would retain the authority. So he could, let's say, if some, if it got really worse, and hopefully it won't, and as Rick said, we're on the tail end. But if, you know, there is a new really horrible strain or something, then they could come in and impose, you know, potentially another mandate. But at this point, it looks like it's going to be left up to the towns and city. That's, that's what the governor's indicated. I think that what's missing from this is that there should be some metrics that are very transparent, that everybody knows what they are, essentially, where it says, look, if we get to, and what, and I don't, I'm not a public health expert, which is one of the things, you know, right? I mean, we need to rely on the experts and on science. We say if it's two percent, whatever, the transmission rate, okay? And maybe that's not the number, right? Look at the hospitalizations, look at the vaccination rates in the towns, and make a decision, right, in terms of what's, you know, in the, in the best interest in the schools and, and the students, and the educators too, because I do feel for, of course, the students and the educators. And we hear it from a lot of teachers who say, especially in elementary school, they're going to work every day where most of the, you know, majority of the students are not vaccinated, right? We don't really fully know, but we know nationally, you know, the average is, right, I think it's thirty-five percent or something for, for the kids, for the smaller ones. Ventilation isn't always great, and they have a lot of concerns. And the first, and I will say that my top priority is keeping the schools open in person. We know when they're not, mental health suffers, there's lots of learning loss. So I think that's the top priority. If we had people take off the mask two months ago, the schools would be closed. The teachers wouldn't be there. There would be rampant, you know, quarantines, et cetera. I think we're getting close. I'd like to see an off ramp defined by metrics, defined by public health officials.
So one of the benefits of going last is I can, I can borrow from what my two colleagues mentioned. So, so I, I would agree with what, what Senator Loebz had to say, that, that the, 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 the power that has been, that, that the governor has been exercising, it, it, it's mostly common sense things that, that, that the state needs. A, a, as Senator Loebz mentioned, you know, being able to get extra staffing for, for, for healthcare, being able to get nurses, being able to access money from the federal government for non-congregate housing, being able to get money for temporary assistance to needy families. You know, all these things which, which you would want to be able to do. Those are the kinds of things that, that, the kinds of authority that the governor has had. And, and, and most likely, you know, again, it's all subject to what we do in the next week, but most likely will continue to have. But, but as Senator Slapp pointed out, he's not going to get any extra power or any extra authority. And I, I just wanted to put a little bit of a finer point on, on, on what Senator Slapp had to say. Yeah, I, I, I don't know that it's, it's, it's accurate to say that, that the, the masking situation in the schools is going to go back to the towns. I, I think what, what's most, well, we all heard what the governor had to say yesterday, that, that on February twenty-eighth, he, he wants this mask, you know, his recommendation is that the mask mandate goes away. But, but I, I, I think what's being talked about in, in the legislature, and, and we'll see what actually happens. But I, I, I think what's being talked about is putting that authority in, in the hands of the, the Commissioner of Public Health, as well as the Commissioner of, of Education. And, and so, so that, th, this mask mandate most likely will go away on, on February twenty-eighth. But the, 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 the talk now is that, and again, I think Derek mentioned this, is, is, is that the Public Health Commissioner, as well as the Department of Education Commissioner, would have the ability to reinstitute it if, if, if the numbers go up, if, if, if it's, if it's deemed necessary. And again, we need some metrics to be able to, to back that up.
And I didn't mean for you guys to have to get into a, a, I was actually trying to avoid like a whole COVID debate, because I know that is a very sensitive thing, and I, everybody wants to make sure that they're saying the right things and, and whatever. I just think that there is a certain percentage of, of people that I know that I've spoken to in town that would just, there's an understanding that, I think after Thursday, as you've all said, some of these executive powers are just going to become permanent, right? But, but probably the.
They're going to be extended, most likely. I don't know if they're going to become permanent. They're going to be extended for a period of time.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we could go on about it, but I think actually that they're not going to be. I mean, in other words, we're going to.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm not debating the merits of any of the.
And then he's not going to have the ability to make new executive orders. So it's actually, yeah.
Well, okay, yeah. I, I'm not debating the merits of any of them. I'm not, that's, I, I just think that there's a, a good percentage of the population, you know, of town that would like to see if there's going to be a new rule implemented, that it does get its time on the floor to be debated and have people have dissenting points of view as opposed to them just being added on. But I'll leave it there. I've taken way more time than everybody else.
I will tell you, Derek used to be a member of the House, now he's a, he's an exalted senator. We, we will have a full and thorough and exhaustive debate on the floor of the House on Thursday.
Yeah, again, I don't, the merits of what the rules are, whatever, is not the point. It's just, I think people would like to see the ability to have these things debated at this point. I think we have the time now to do that. I don't think there's less, there's obviously still, you know, issues and emergencies, and COVID is still a real thing, but I think that there's more time to sort of have these discussions in public now.
Thank you, CJ. First, Derek, Mike, Rick, I'd like to thank all of you for your service and for always keeping the residents of Farmington in mind with all the decisions that you make at the state Capitol. So last year, when you came to the Town Council meeting, one of the things I brought up and I, and I stressed was the need for the additional pilot funds for Farmington, as well as other towns in the, that receive pilot funds. And so I'm very happy to hear that we're going to be receiving more pilot funds. And thank you very much for all the hard work you put in to make that happen. Do you have the dollar amount of what we expect to be receiving?
Yeah, I believe, and, yeah, you might have it off the top of your head. I believe it's about a seventy percent increase, and about a million dollar increase, but, but you might, you might know it probably better than I do.
Joe, correct me, is it one, one point three million additional?
It sounds about right.
One point five.
One point five.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And one other question. So I was reading through, and you discussed in your, kind of your opening remarks about some of these proposals. The governor's, Governor Lamont's recent proposal for three hundred thirty-six million dollars in tax cuts. One of the, one piece of the proposal is to restore the full eligibility of the property tax credit. Right now, it's restricted to people sixty-five years and older. The governor is also proposing to increase the property tax credit from two hundred dollars to three hundred dollars. Back in nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-six, when my father was a state representative, he introduced the bill for the property tax relief. And the property tax credit was five hundred dollars at one point, and kind of got reduced over the years. But it seems like this would be moving in the right direction in, in increasing that, if that's, if that is passed. So I think that's good. And you talked about some of the other components of the tax cut proposals that are, that are being floated at this point. So I guess my question, and I'll try and keep it general, because I know these are all, you know, proposals right now, and you're going to have to go through a lot of deliberations and decide what makes sense. But kind of going back to your remarks, Derek, that you certainly want to, and I agree with you, that whatever you want to do, you want to make sure it's responsible, and you want to make sure it's sustainable. And I don't think anybody's looking for, you know, a, a one-year gimmick type of tax cut. We, you know, we'd want something that's, you know, responsible and sustainable, like you said. With that said, if, if it is possible to do a property tax cut or, or some other sort of tax cut that, that is sustainable going forward, is that something that, that you would support?
I, I wholeheartedly support it. I mean, I think that, you know, folks are, I mean, that's the tax that I hear the most about, honestly, is the property tax. And it doesn't reflect one's ability to pay, as we know, especially seniors can be hit hard when they're in a house that's accrued in value, especially now with housing prices. You know, we're also looking at, you know, potentially allowing towns to delay revaluation if they wanted to get kind of through this potentially COVID bump. People's cars' values are increasing as well. So, yeah, I think that is going to help potentially with the cost of just living in Connecticut and inflation and, and, you know, keeping people in their homes. So I'm, I'm very interested in it and want to do something, to your point, that's real, not just an election year gimmick, that's sustainable. I think years past, we were mailing back, you know, fifty-dollar rebate checks to people. I think, you know, and not paying our debt, like, I don't want to do that, you know? I want to do something real. So I, I appreciate your comments, and I, I think I would align mine with yours.
I, I would agree, you know, that, that's certainly something that's welcome. Again, we have to be careful, because this is how we got into this mess in the first place, as the saying goes. You know, for, for forty years, you know, we, we, as, as a state, and, and of course, none of us were around in this decision-making process, but, you know, we, we, we made commitments that we, that we couldn't, that we couldn't back up. And, and so we, we ended up with a tremendous, you know, unfunded liability. And I think that's one of the things that, that people don't realize i- in, in many cases, is that we, we really are trying to do a double duty here in the legislature. We're trying to make up for a, a debt that we were saddled with years ago, and we're trying to move forward, right? So, so we have to do two jobs. We have to pay off the old debt and worry about, you know, what we're going to do to, 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 to provide good services to people going forward. So, so, you know, that, that's something that you need to keep in mind. And, and, you know, speaking of property taxes, unfortunately, the property tax is, is, is one of the only ways that, that the town, the towns in Connecticut can raise revenue. And, and, and it's, 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 it doesn't, as Derek pointed out, it doesn't reflect your ability to pay necessarily. You know, income tax is probably more reflective of, of, of a person's ability to pay. And yet, that's, that's the main funding mechanism that we have for, for the towns. So, you know, we talk about this every year. We need, we, we need to do something about, about property tax reform. We talk about it, but it never happens. And I'm not sure in, in, in an election year and in a short session that that's going to happen. But, but sometime in the next few years, we need to look at property tax reform, property tax equity, you know, a, as a state. But anyhow, I'll get off my so far.
And Senator Loebz, if you'd like to.
For brevity, you know, I, I agree completely with my two colleagues. If it is sustainable and it makes sense, I can support it. But I am deep down in my core, a very, very cheap person. And I think anytime we can use for a surplus to pay down debt, I mean, I think that's something that will help the state, every single one of us, for generations to come, if we can get some of this debt hanging over our heads, out of, you know, pay down as soon as possible. So, you know, but it doesn't need to all go in one direction. So if it's sustainable and it makes sense, obviously we can support it.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Brian?
All right. Thank you, CJ. Gentlemen, thank you for coming here tonight and for talking to us. The nice thing about going last is all the important topics have really been covered by, by my.
Rooting for the Bengals. That's what you were going to ask.
Well, I would like to just ask you something that's a little bit closer to home, something that's near and dear to me and is part of our long-term plan here, and that is the Parson's property in the village. Now, the reason I'm asking that is because I know that you guys have been involved in helping us get that accomplished. But right now, in terms of our long-term plan, we can't really do anything with the property. We've kind of put it on hold at the moment, but we would like to engage the community in what we want to do with that property. We might like to engage contractors to see what it might cost to do certain things with that property. But we can't do anything until we get the deed. No one will really talk to us until we get the deed. And I, that's, as far as I know, we haven't received it yet. So my question to you guys is, in between all the sessions you have coming up, it would be really helpful if you could help expedite us receiving that deed so that we can engage the community and talk substantially about what we can do with that piece of property in the village, which is part and parcel of what we're going to do on Route Ten with the sidewalks and how we want to treat our entire gateway. There are lots of things we could do, but we really can't discuss it in any substance until we have that deed. Is that accurate, Kathy?
Yes, we haven't received the deed yet.
See, I, I, I guess mistakenly thought that everything was going along smoothly with regards to that. So is, is that, is that a holdup with regards to Department of Transportation or, or some other state agency?
I think everything's going smoothly, other than the fact that it's either at the AG's office, the deeds go through that. I'm not sure where it's, where it goes. So the language has been established, and I don't think there's any problem with it. It's just that it just has gone, it has not returned back to us yet.
Brian, great point. And if you need us to kick the bureaucracy in the butt a little bit, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, that's not, you know, well, I don't know all the details of where it might be. All I know is that we don't have it yet, and that's kind of pulling us up a little bit. So I just thought I might ask for your help in that area.
Well, I would just say, in, in the future, don't wait until we come to see you. Brian, you, you, you know, you have my phone number. Give me a call. And Kathy, CJ, same thing. Give me a call. And I'm, I'm happy to make a phone call or two and, and try to, you know, see what's going on. So, yeah, that's, that's an easy one. Okay.
Thank you.
What's that, Brian?
That was, that was really my question.
Unfortunately, Brian isn't last. I still get to. I'll, I'll tag on to Brian's. You remember, Mike, we asked you in November about the holdup on the deed and the work that was done on the sidewalks. We asked if you could come back in December. You said you hadn't heard back from the state yet, which was sort of our problem to begin with, with all that, and where the delay was. And Derek and Rick, you're probably not aware of this. We had a long delay on getting our sidewalks, our funding for Main Street sidewalks. We had been following up continually with the state. And whether it's because, you know, it was work from home or COVID, or whatever it was, it was delayed for an entire extra season. We're hoping to be able to do that with the grants being received next year. But that was our question back in November, Mike. What was the holdup? Did it have to do with COVID? Did it have to do with work at home? So I think that's, to answer Brian's question, we just need that same answer. If we could get that, that would be great.
Where does that stand? No, I, I, look, what I was told was that, that it, the approval, it got hung up in the approval process. And, and, okay, that, that isn't really a specific answer, but that's, in general, that's it. Where do we stand now? Have they promised you when?
I believe we got a grant right now.
No, the, the sidewalks, all the approvals are in place now. We went out to bid, and we're starting that project. So that's set. But there was a holdup in the approval process, but that's now taken care of. The deed, I think, is in the, it's been approved at the executive level. It's been approved, and it's somewhere in between the Department of Transportation and I think the AG's office. But I'm not exactly sure if it's the AG's office. It's in your agencies.
Okay. No, and, and that, that could be solved with two phone calls, one to the DOT and one to the Attorney General's office. So, so I'm, I'm glad we're having this conversation. But, but again, to be clear, the sidewalks, you're, you're.
All the approvals are.
We're good. Okay. All right.
So we got there. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's, fortunately, I think my fellow council folks up here did a great job asking just about all the questions. A few things I just want to, I guess, reiterate to some degree. You know, the police, the public safety, of course, is paramount. I know to all of you and to all of us. you and to all of us. So everything you can do to help with any bills that are supporting public safety is critical to Farmington and to all your towns. One of the biggest issues is back to that funding, and I really appreciate your making your best efforts to get the funding in. One of the things that caught my attention was Farmington's funding for 2021, when we actually passed the referendum, was 18-point, what was that number, 18.93. In 2022, it's 19.64. If we could get the 2022 rates, since we haven't even gone with the bonding in 2021, we would actually, I believe, be made whole. So I don't know the process. You all know that much better than I, but since our numbers actually went up for the town of Farmington, that would be a substantial help to us. The other thing we always talk about, and Mike alluded to this also, when we're talking about the formula, the biggest issue seems to be that the formula hasn't changed and it hasn't been updated, because there are towns that have, as was mentioned earlier, higher per capita incomes, also times that have higher grand lists, that are all getting more than Farmington does. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying it doesn't seem like it's been equitable over time, and it may not have been updated. So it might be helpful for all of you also, just to relook at those lists and see when the last time they actually said, wait, we're checking all the numbers, and they still do pan out this way. Because it just, from outsiders, when we look at it, it seems like it doesn't make so much sense. The pilot, great, we really appreciate getting that money in there. That's a huge help. One of the things, and again, Mike, you were up here asking these questions at one point in time, was we know the pilot dollars that are coming in is a small fraction that we would have gotten. It's payment in lieu of taxes, but it's a small fraction of what we could have gotten. It's great to get anything, but we've always seemed to get a little lower rate on the pilot than we should have been, depending on how you categorize Yukon's whole building over there. So just different issues I kind of like to bring up. The school, I know, is looking at ventilation issues, and I think, Derek, you mentioned that, one of the things in public health. I hope there's some support from the state when we're trying to look at schools and put in new ventilation systems, so when the kids are in school and there are issues, we can get fresh air and we can keep the kids healthy.
There is a proposal, I didn't mean to interrupt CJ.
No, go ahead. Appreciate it.
There is a proposal that I think is going to get some traction to allow the ventilation to be part of the school construction bonding project, so that'll, that's actually smart because, you know, it's much cheaper to do that than build a whole new building, right? And it's good for public health. So I think that, I'm hopeful that that'll happen, and that'll help towns like Farmington.
Great, thank you. The only other thing I just want to mention is, you know, we were talking about work from home. Do you all have any feel for when the state employees may be going back to work at the state rather than work at home?
Well, I was going to say, my, you know, people in the legislative office building go in some days, right, but not all the days. I would imagine, I hate to guess, I would imagine it's pretty soon. You know, we think the numbers are going to keep dropping. I hope so, right? Not a public health expert, but, you know, we're looking at that and also, you know, all the buildings in downtown Hartford, right, and the whole commercial real estate market that we need to come back, and all the restaurants and all the other, you know, economic activities. So I've always been, I know a lot of people are looking to the spring where we really start to come back, but I can investigate that more.
Okay. It'd just be nice to see, as you say, not just for the people and when we're making calls, and I think the communications between all the staff within the state is better when people are actually there versus trying to catch people in there at home, whatnot, you know? Anyway, that'd be great to hear. I think we, you've pretty much covered. Is there anything, Kathy?
I just wanted to, I just had, you've mentioned all, I have three things. One of them, we haven't talked about, but just when you're going through your stuff, the regional health districts, again, with COVID and things of that nature, they've been underfunded for years and years and years, and just that they have been under a tremendous amount of stress over this whole COVID. So if you could keep that in mind with at least trying to see if there's any additional funding that the regional health districts can get, I think it would be well, definitely well worth it. And like I said, they really have been doing a great job for us in Farmington, and they've just been under tremendous stress. So that's just one thing. Mike, you mentioned it, and one of the things that I think really needs a much more attention, at least publicly, and we need to talk about, is the solid waste management crisis. I mean, that is a huge issue about what we're going to do with Mira, and we've been talking about it, and I think we need, like, a realistic plan. And all the different ideas, I think, are great, but they're not getting rid of, we're still going to have garbage. The garbage has to go somewhere, and I think Farmington has been participating, and we're looking to reduce our waste on a lot of different ways, but we have to come up with a plan about what we're going to do about Mira, and I know that you mentioned it, and it is a crisis. It's really very serious.
And again, I don't claim to be an expert on this, but I think you're aware of this, Kathy. The Mira Board of Directors, they were involved in negotiations with a company that won the bidding process through deep for about two or three years. And after three years of negotiations, they couldn't come to an agreement. I think I have that right. So.
Yeah, there's.
It's not, it's not that it hasn't been pursued, but they just couldn't come to an agreement on what to do with that plan, so.
Right. There's a lot of different issues that go along with it, but it is just a crisis situation, and I think, like, a lot of the towns, and what are we going to do, I think, is, what's the solution? And just, and then lastly, and I think, Derek, you mentioned it, that it would be great if the air quality, if it could be reimbursable. That was one of the things that I had written down, too.
Yep.
And that was it. Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for coming here. It's, we appreciate your time. It's, we're not always brief when you come, but we only get one shot at it, so we appreciate you being here.
But again, I will go back to what I said. You could, CJ, you have all my phone numbers.
I got you on speed down, Mike. I got you right here.
And all you guys, I mean, give me a call. You know, let's not make this once a year. Call me once a week if you want, you know, if that's what we need to do, I'm happy to pursue it, so.
I couldn't agree more. You should all call Mike once a week.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Want a break or keep rolling? Keep rolling. Okay.
Yeah.
With that, we will move on to Item D, a public hearing. Joseph?
Yes, sir. Item D, number one. I'd like to make a motion to consider the purchase of the property owned by Robert and Eileen Bland, located at 8480 Meadow Road, 11.27 acres, and 8481 Meadow Road, 7.13 acres, for a total price of $604,000.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. I will turn it over to Bill Wadsworths.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Town Council. My name is Bill Wadsworth, 73 Rattlekill Road in Farmington, and I'm here on behalf of the Town of Farmington as a member of the Land Acquisition Committee. And I'm here to present for your consideration the purchase of Lot 8480 Meadow Road and Lot 8481 Meadow Road. The property is located, I can see a pointer, in this area right here. And I can zoom in on that a little bit. This is property 8480. And this is property 8481. Here's a survey of the property. And this kind of blows out, comes out a little bit better, just to get orientation. It's located in the south-central part of town. To the north is Meadow Road and residential properties. To the south is residential properties and is town-owned, upper elementary school. Label there is the Town of Farmington. And then there's State of Connecticut open space, owned by DEP, I believe. To the east is residential property and town-owned open space. That open space, we purchased back in, I think, 2001, two or three, from the Heinz farm, had 50 acres, so this would be adjacent to that. Access to the property is along 8480 Meadow Road, and there's 357 feet of frontage on that road for access to the property. And Lot 8481 Meadow Road is accessed through Lot 8480. The current owners are Robert and Eileen Bland as trustees. The size of the property is Lot 8480 is 11.27 acres, and Lot 8481 is 7.13 acres, for a total of 18.4 acres. The zoning is R40. Land characteristics, Lot 8480 has 5.2 acres of farmland included in it, which, again, is adjacent to the Heinz property, and the balance of it is wooded. Topography is rolling pasture. It's a wildlife corridor for connecting to a number of different, the open pieces, open space in that area. Lot 8481 is entirely wooded, and topography, again, is leveled to rolling. And again, it provides a habitat for wildlife corridor. It meets requirements of Item 1B of the Land Acquisition Procedures, is open space, land that has significant scenic, topographic conservation or wilderness value based on the characteristics of the land. Transaction history, was placed on the land acquisition list in 2003, and it complies with Item 5 of the Land Acquisition Committee Procedure. It was also approved to be listed by the Conservation Commission. And upon a verbal request from Eileen Bland, we've been working on this property, you know, since it got put on our list back in 2003, but we've had numerous contacts with the owners over those years, but the last one we had that they would be agreeable to sell. So we had an appraisal done on Lot 8480 and Lot 8481, and for the town, on July 10th of 2021, it came in 18.4 acres at $508,000, or $27,609 per acre. And the owner had appraisal done on January 11th, 2021, appraised the 18.4 acres at $700,000, or $38,000, roughly $38,000 per acre. It's important to note, in their appraisal, there was a development method that valued the property anywhere from $660,000 to $820,000. It's currently on the market for $975,000. So through negotiation with the owner, we came up to a, basically, we split their appraisal with our appraisal, and came up with a price of $604,000. Land Acquisition Committee, again, will have further considerations. There was a program, we participated in quite a bit back in the day, the State of Connecticut Grant Program, but I don't believe there's any opportunity for us at this time to take that advantage. We're in the process of getting a Phase 1 environmental study done on the property. We have the survey, and the owner has also requested to have the conservation put on, conservation easement put on the property moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions.
Right now, I think I would open up to the public.
Yep. Okay, first, we're going to go to public and see if we have any public comment or questions. And we begin all public comment with those in person, and please state your name and address, and then we would move to any online questions we have.
My name is Kate Grady Benson, 32 Mountain Road, Farmington. I am the present Executive Director of the Farmington Land Trust, and I am here in support of the acquisition, the purchase of this particular piece of property. As you all may know, we're a conservation organization, nonprofit in the town. We take care of, maintain, and preserve over 300 acres, and a lot of our land is either adjacent to Farmington, Town of Farmington open space, or we do have easements on a couple properties that are Town of Farmington. So we are all about preserving land, and this particular piece of property is wonderful in that it's contiguous with other open space. Again, to echo Bill's statement about wildlife corridor, that's a very important piece. Also, it's adjacent to the Westwoods Elementary School property, which is, again, Town of Farmington open space, and it would afford it, you know, teachers at Westwoods the ability to go into the forest that is, that are adjacent to their property and do more of the, what now the schools are starting to get involved with, outdoor education and some exploration and really in-person experimentation on the land. So we're very excited about that. And we had, I did submit a letter for, thank you, CJ.
Yes, and those are at everyone's desk here, so we all have a copy.
Oh, great, great. And we did, we did ask that a reimbursement grant be applied for, but, Bill, I think you just said that that's probably not an option, but the conservation easement would be something that would happen with the Town of Farmington? Yeah, yeah. And we would be in full support of that. That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. With that, I'll ask if there are any other public comment.
About the public hearing.
About the public hearing, yes.
There are no hands online.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to discuss a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and as far as the council, we are going to be discussing this a bit later in the agenda. Sorry, Bill, under New Business, Item N, would be when we ask questions for Bill.
What does that mean?
It means you got to hang out a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
All right.
Okay. We are now closing the public hearing at 8:45. We will be moving on to new items, of which we have none, I believe. Public comment and any topics other than, topic with just any topics at all? We have no one in-house here, online.
I do not see any hands online.
We wore you all out already. We've got no one online asking questions. Item G.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion, Item G1, to accept the Town Council meeting notes for January 11th, 2022.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion for Item G, number two, January 18th, 2022, special Town Council meeting to accept the minutes.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion for Item G3, to accept the minutes of January 25th, 2022, regular Town Council meeting.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay. Item H, reading of communications and written appeals. There was one letter that was submitted late, but we just heard from Ms. Grady Benson, but that letter will be submitted for the record also. Item I, Report of Committees. First committee is the 1928 Building Ad-Hoc Committee. Johnny?
We've had a couple of meetings, one with the Ad-Hoc Committee to kind of lay the groundwork, another one with the professional partners to get a better idea of the kind of hard deadlines that we're facing, and we're currently backing out the schedule. I expect we'll have something at the next council meeting a little bit more, unless Kathy has anything to add.
Nope, I think that's, next meeting.
Great. Okay, next item is two, the American Rescue Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, or ARPA, meeting. We discussed a few things in this meeting, trying to get it set up. The first is, we realize funds will not be used. We all reached consensus for general operating accounts. This is something that tends to be frowned upon, particularly by the rating agencies, but what this would also do is create a hole in next year's budget if we used it for our regular operating accounts. So we decided we would not be looking into that. We'd also recommend that the funds are used for purposes that benefit everyone in the community rather than a select group, and we think that would be the best overall philosophy for implementing this. And the third would be, whatever we're looking at be beneficial and equitable to the, to fund a large town-wide capital project, so using these funds for bigger projects and kind of taking a bite out of the bigger projects that are out there. So that was what we decided at our ad hoc meeting. We'd like to put that out to the council, see if that's agreeable, if we could reach consensus that we all think that is a good direction to go with these ARPA funds. So with that, any questions, comments, thoughts, or just if there are none, we could get for an approval on consensus here. Do we have a consensus? Everyone like it, just raise your hand, so I can see a consensus out with that.
So just to clarify, CJ, so basically what you're saying is, what you guys agreed to in the committee is not using it for the operating budget, but still could be used for one or more CIP-type of projects?[1773.73]
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, very good. So we have consensus there. Anything I missed from the ARPA folks?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, going to item I three, Farmington High School Building Committee.
So we had a meeting last week where the committee selected Innovative Engineering Services as the finalist for commissioning services, and we, at the same time, authorized the town manager and the Professional Partnership Subcommittee to negotiate and sign a contract with them. The other thing was that we voted and gave consensus to proceed with early enabling package, which is allowing the Professional Partners to move forward with some of the temporary parking areas and the, kind of getting the stage set for the new building area, so, you know, during the summer where there's no students involved and the safety concerns are much less. Our next meeting is February sixteenth, and as everybody always knows, you can get all the real information at FHSbuildingproject.org.
Great, Mike, Johnny. Green Efforts Committee.
That's me again, huh?
Yes, it is.
All right. We had a meeting, and we continue to talk about some of the anti-idling, you know, items that we're pushing at the schools. We also talked considerably about composting and some of the subjects that were brought up tonight about the landfills and that, and how we can help that. So I think that's it.
Great, thank you. Land Acquisition Committee.
We're in the middle of the hearing, so we'll have more to discuss further on this meeting.
Excellent. Racial Equality Task Force.
The only provided you with, we are going to have a community conversation at the end of the month. We are still working on a time and date and what that topic will be, and we're hoping next week that our website will be up and running where people can visit it and visit past meetings and other conversations that we have with the community.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to item J, reports to the council chair and liaisons, beginning with the council chair. Appreciate today getting our legislators in, that was nice. I appreciate all your questions and comments here that we've given to them. Just a few things, you know, we're getting into our budget season now, so the next month and a half is going to be our very busy season, so strap in, folks, it's going to be fun. We're working through the high school project. We set our strategic plans for the next two years. As you heard, we're working on the nineteen twenty-eight building and the ARPA funds, what we're going to be doing there. And I'll just add, very important, we're always looking for new volunteers throughout the town, so those of us up here are always reaching out, but anyone out there watching or looking at us later on on videotape, please let us know. We'll be beginning to post the openings on the town website shortly. Just a few to think of, there's Plainville Area Cable, Unionville Historic, Green Efforts, and Veterans Memorial are all looking for new members right now. With that, I will move on to the Board of Education Liaison.
They're just knee-deep in budgets, lots and lots of budgets.
Excellent.
And they'll be presenting very shortly.
Great, thank you, Rafina. Economic Development.
Yep, the Economic Development Commission met on January twelfth. The commission reviewed their proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year. The total budget is twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. All the items in their budget are flat compared to the previous year, with the exception there's new, one new item that I think I've discussed in the past in some of my updates is the money set aside for the installation of Wayfinder signage that the commission is interested in pursuing for the Unionville area to help residents and visitors find the small businesses in Unionville. The February EDC meeting has been canceled, and the next EDC meeting will be March ninth at five thirty PM.
Great, thank you. Conservation Inland Wetlands.
None at this time.
Great. Bicycle Advisory Committee, we were discussing and working on the Wayfinder signs that Dad was just talking about with economic development, and we're moving forward, trying to expand that committee to include more modes of transport than just biking. Moving on to the Farmington Historic District.
Thank you CJ. There were a couple of items that were discussed that passed, and just to be brief, there was one item that did not pass, which had to do with replacing a wooden door with a metal door, that's not appropriate for the Historic District, so that did not pass. And just one item of note was there was a discussion of having alternates vote on election of officers. There was a letter from the town attorney that was reviewed, and let's see, it was stated that based on the town attorney's legal opinion, and that was stated by the chairman, Chairman Honeyman, that it would be in violation of the legal opinion if they altered the bylaws to allow alternates to vote during the election of officers. There's more information, of course, on the, in the, excuse me, in the minutes, and our next meeting will be February fifteenth from five to seven PM.
Great, thank you, Brian. Housing Authority.
I had nothing to report.
Okay, Human Relations Commission.
I have to do this correctly, so forgive me for reading, or else Jay Toulon will come out. So, the Human Relations Commission met on January twenty-fourth. Kat Kuduski and Russ Arnold updated the HRC on the status of the sidewalk project. The HRC approved a rating scale for events, activities, events and activities and acknowledgements. The Farmington High School Social Justice Club will present at the next meeting on March twenty-eighth. They also will continue the discussion, the committee will, commission will continue discussion about their goals for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Library Board.
Library Board met January nineteenth. There was discussion about their forthcoming budget proposal, nothing concrete.
Great. TPZ.
TPZ met January tenth, January twenty-fourth, and last night, February seventh. Nothing really worth sharing at the moment, there's big stuff on the horizon with the midpoint development being discussed February twenty-third. Sadly, on January twenty-third, we did lose a member of the commission, Marcy Schwartz, who passed away after a year and a half courageous battle with lymphoma. Ryan had some more to say about that, I believe.
Oh, sure, thank you Keith. Before we make our nomination to fill the seat left by Marcy, I would like to recognize and remember Marcy Schwartz. Marcy was an active and much-loved, dedicated member of the Farmington community. She was gracious, kind, warm-hearted and vibrant. She had a wonderful sense of humor and was tremendously engaging. She had a wonderful way of making you feel as if you had been lifelong friends whenever you spoke with her. Marcy served as the town's elected member of the Farmington Town Planning and Zoning Commission. She brought passion, commitment, and the best interests of the town to everything she did. She brought that same passion and commitment as a volunteer for the Farmington Land Trust and many other organizations, and we appreciate her service. Marcy will be remembered dearly by her family, friends, neighbors, coworkers, her community, and practically anyone she came in contact with. I will always remember her fondly. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And I'd just like to say, it's, you know, Marcy was a much beloved member of the community, volunteering in many areas and aspects, so if you would please, we'll just take a moment Thank you. Unionville Historic District Commission.
Yes, the Unionville Historic District Commission met on February third. The commission continued to review their list of potential properties for expanding the district, and the commission is also starting to plan another walking tour for sometime in the fall of this year. And the next meeting is scheduled for March third at seven PM.
I get it. UVIA.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, WPCA.
Yes, tomorrow's meeting for WPCA, where they're going to be voting on a zero percent increase, so no increase.
Everybody likes that. Any other liaisons? Seeing none. Moving on to item K, Report of the Town Manager.
You have the written report, but just two items that I wanted to speak about. First is that the Farmington Police Department recently received two large donations from the Lions Club of Unionville, donated ten thousand dollars, and Ion Bank donated an additional five thousand dollars. These donations were made to assist in the purchase of a heavy-duty pickup truck capable of towing the Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT canteen trailer. So thank you very much to both of those groups. That's a nice donation that the Farmington Police Department received. And then the other item is the Farmington Fire Station Building Committee update. As you know, based on our discussions at the strategic plan workshop meetings, the town is not establishing a formal building committee until later this year. To keep the project's momentum, the police chief and the volunteer fire chiefs have set up a working group to review and update the town's facility study, which was done in two thousand and fourteen, and the emergency service consultant study, which was done in two thousand and eighteen. I think this will be particularly important because the original study is eight years old. The working group will be very helpful to the future building committee. And then, just for the members of the public, we do have a budget schedule. Next, February twenty-second is going to be our capital budget presentation, and then Tuesday, March eighth, will be our first public hearing on the town manager's recommended budget. April third will be the public hearing on the town council's proposed budget. April eighteenth is the first annual town meeting, and April twenty-eighth is the first budget referendum, and the week of March ninth will be our budget workshop meetings.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we have a town manager, Martin, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the town manager's report.
Second. A motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to appointments.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for agenda item L one, that Bob Cant will be appointed to the Congress.
Contingent.
Thank you, I'm all tongue-tied. Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission as an alternate for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Did you have another one, or Rafina you have?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Liz Sanford to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
Can I add a couple of things about Liz?
Absolutely.
Before we go on. So Liz Sanford is an all-around fantastic woman. She's lived in Farmington for over seventeen years with her husband Ted and her two children, Will and Libby. She's worked at Noah Wallace Elementary School as a building substitute for fourteen years. In addition to being elected to the TPZ this year as an alternate, she has also volunteered extensively with her church, which is First Church. In addition, she's the vice chair of the Board of the Stanley Whitman House Museum and has worked with the Farmington Youth Lacrosse and Troop sixty-eight BSA. In the greater community, she and her whole family are very involved with rebuilding Together Hartford. Liz is very excited to serve on TPZ, and we are so excited to have her. She'll be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz was just elected as an alternate recently, so.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Joey, I think you have another one?
Yes, sir, agenda item L thirteen, I make a motion of Bob Hand to be appointed to the Land Acquisition Committee for indefinite term.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to item N, old business having none, we will move right to item N. Bill, you're back, new business.
Yes, N one, I make a motion to recommend the purchase of eighty-four eighty metal road, eighty-four eighty-one metal road, to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a report under section eight dash two-four of the Connecticut State Statute.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Now it's time for questions and comments. Kathy, you want to add something first?
Yep, but just so everyone's clear, that this is, what you're doing right now is that you're sending this to a report to the TPZ for section eight dash twenty-four. So once the TPZ is going to refer, look at this at their February eighth, I mean, we're going to make a referral today at the February eighth meeting, and then we're going to receive the report back at the March eighth meeting, and then we're going to actually vote on the acquisition at the March eighth meeting. As I have in the note here, and as Bill went through, it is for a acquisition cost of six hundred and four thousand dollars. It's eighteen acres, eighteen point four oh acres. It's been on our acquisition list for many, many, many years. It has a lot of different values for open space, and I would strongly recommend that we refer it to the eight dash twenty-four, and Bill, lots of us here to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
I'd just like to say, thank you. You said for almost twenty years you've been working on this property, so thank you for keeping it on the radar and pushing forward, and hopefully we can make this come true.
Thank you.
I just wanted to second that. Thank you very much for making sure that this happens for our town. It's going to be a great addition.
Yes, thank you.
I personally lugged about twenty stumps to Westwoods about two months ago for outdoor classrooms, so I know that, like, Westwoods is extremely interested in exploring back there and doing more work with the students in the woods. So to Mrs. Grady Benson's point, I think this is going to be great for that, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted, yeah, just reiterate what everybody else is saying. Thank you for all your hard work, Bill, in getting this done, and this will be a great addition to the open space in town.
Yes, thank you, Bill. It's a pleasure working with you on acquisitions, so I appreciate all the hard work you do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So whittling down the list, Bill.
Whittling down the list, we got a few left.
A few left, this is Vanessa's L three, so, appreciate it, appreciate all your hard work on this. It's great to bring them home and get the negotiations in, and not just bring people at the table, but to reach a number that's comfortable for the town and for the owner, so thank you. With that, we have a motion on the table, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Excellent, thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to N two.
N two, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-two blighted building list.
Second. A motion in a second, Kathy?
At the last meeting, there was just a small error in the motion, so we're just formally doing it this time, and the two properties are the fourteen Blue Ridge and the twenty-three Lakeview Drive.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Item three.
And three, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven PM in the town hall council chambers, on the town manager's two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three recommended budget.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on agenda item N four, to remove Rafina Backus Lee as chair of the Green Efforts Committee and appoint Johnny Carrier as a chair of the Green Efforts Committee.
Second. We have a motion in a second. I'll just make a comment, this was at request, we were just doing a swap of two positions, so I appreciate you both for being accommodating on this. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N five, I make a motion to remove Johnny Carrier as a town council liaison to the Inland Wetlands Commission and appoint Rafina Backus Lee as a town council liaison to the Inland Wetlands Commission.
And for those of you paying attention at home, this is exactly the opposite of what we just said, so this completes the swap. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N six, I'd like to motion to ratify the tentative collective bargain agreement between the Town of Farmington and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, ASME, local eighteen eighty-nine, for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Kathy?
This is a tentative agreement for a three-year contract term from July first, two thousand and twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is our ASME, this is our largest bargaining unit. Highlights of the agreement include various language and procedural changes that have no net financial impact but are positive enhancements to the town's operations, updates and clarifications of language in areas such as comp time and FMLA. We do have some incremental health insurance premium cost sharing increases, prescription co-pays have also been increased, wages are the cost of living adjustments, it was for two thousand and twenty-one is two point five, twenty-two is three point oh, and two thousand and twenty-three is two point seven five. As many of you know who have been on the council before, we usually do an overall cost of the contract, so the overall cost of the contract is six point six five percent over three years, or two point two two percent each year. This tentative agreement has been ratified by the union membership. I think this is a fair contract to both the town and to the ASME membership, the union membership. We've been working on it for about five or six months to come to an agreement. We will, obviously, if it's agreed upon today, no arbitration, and we work together collaboratively. And I think with the wages, I think this is a fair wages, considering what the cost of living and the inflation is going on right now.
Great, thank you. Questions? Seeing no questions, I'll just make one comment. I appreciate the unions working with us on this, as Kathy said, our largest bargaining unit. For the past many months, as we are working to get our referendum passed on the high school, we were continually talking about this three- we were continually talking about this three percent. It's critical on things like this, that our contracts help us keep to that three percent, our largest fixed cost in almost any business and in our town, you know, as our people. And we've got a tremendous group of employees in town, and we really appreciate them working with us. If there are no other comments, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N-seven, to approve the property tax refunds as stated below.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any questions on these tax refunds? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. I believe we have no executive session set for today. So I will leave you with a quote from Seneca the Younger. "The important thing about a problem is not the solution, but the strength regained in finding the solution." With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir. First, happy birthday to Brian Rush, our IT guy. Without him, we wouldn't be on air right now.
Happy birthday, Brian.
And for that, I make a motion adjourned, February eighth, twenty-twenty-two, town council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at nine-ten. Thank you, everyone. All right. Nice job, everyone. Good job with our reps.
The percentage.